Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Catherine Mardix. I am the Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Chicago. I am also the Unit Leader of the South Side Unit. I especially want to thank our candidates. We have all four candidates here this evening, and I'm looking forward to it. Let me just go ahead and go through a few things, a blurb on the league, some ground rules, and some information to get us started. I know we're starting exactly on time, but we'll have people when they come in will not miss the actual forum with the question and answer period. So, the League of Women Voters of Chicago is a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and to ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy and education. Through this forum, we hope we all become better informed about the issues facing our communities and become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. A few ground rules. The, there'll be questions. The question-answer period will have all four candidates on the screen at all times. The moderator and the timekeeper will also be visible for you. The questions/response times will be indicated for each question, and the candidates will be allowed to finish a sentence once started, but we will be enforcing strict time limits. Karim is going to be our... Thanks, Karim, for being our timekeeper, and he will be holding up paddles that will indicate, and that will be for you to see, audience, but also for our candidates to see. Each candidate will have 90-second opening statement and a 90-second closing statement. For the most part, the forum will follow a traditional question-and-answer format with timed responses, but occasionally, we will possibly ask a yes or no question. And Ariel, to remind you, be sure and state out loud what the responses are for those who are just listening, okay? And can't see their hands. Besides the prayer questions, we will monitor for audience questions in chat, which the moderator will read. No questions should be directed at an individual candidate. It's going to be tight this evening. We'll get in as many as we can, and if they're duplicates, we'll probably just go with the question that we've already got ready. So, before we move on to the question-and-answer period, a few things we thought, since this is all new, a new position, a new election, we thought we'd just say a couple of words. Facts about the elected school board. Actually, on the ballot, we all say "school board," but on the ballot, it is the Chicago Board of Education. So, don't be fooled by that. We're expanding the board from seven to 21. A process to get to a fully-elected school board is underway. 10 will be elected this election, and the mayor appoints 10 more, plus one president, so he will point 11. The job description, the CPS has a budget of more than $9 billion, which is used to serve over 325,000 students across 634 schools. Governing this organization is a tremendous responsibility for the board members selected to lead. Board members fulfill a number of specific key responsibilities, including but not limited to... And this is all on the CPS website. Hiring and evaluating the CEO. Establishing the direction, goals, and priorities for the district. Approving district policies. Approving purchasing decisions, contracts, and intergovernmental agreements. Approving the district budget and capital improvement plan. Approving the school year calendar. Approving school continuous improvement plans, school actions, and school charters and contracts. Approving the dismissal of probationary-appointed teachers, contract principals, and tenured teachers and non-probationary educational support personnel. So now, I'd like to turn this over to Ariel. Ariel will be our moderator, Ariel Trejo. She is an undergraduate at the University of Chicago. She has been our Institute of Politics intern for the spring and summer, and she's been... She has done our moderator training. Okay, I've lost you, Anana. There you are. And we will now add Karim. If I can find him.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we'll be starting with the 90-second opening statement. To start us off, Robert, if you would.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and grateful to have the opportunity to be here on today. I am Robert Jones, candidate for the 10th District. Just some things about me. I'm a grandfather of 12. I'm a father of four. I'm a husband. I'm a faith leader of over 40 years, and I'm a pastor of the Brownsville community of 17 years. I have sacrificed myself in the help of advocacy for our young people by being one of the Diet Hunger Strikers to reopen a publicly-closed high school, diet high school. But not only that, I've been an advocate for education at every level. One of the things that I would like to see is educational equity and economic equity along with sustainable community schools, and of course, a holistic restorative justice environment for all of our schools.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on, we'll go to Karen.
Evening, everyone. I'm Karen Norrington Reeves. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having this event tonight. I am a candidate in the 10th District, and I come to you as a K-12 graduate of Chicago Public Schools, the mother of a current student with special needs, the LSC chair at our school, and also as a former teacher. I come to this race with significant experience in education, governance, board management, nonprofit leadership, as well as law, and administrative law in particular. I'm in this race for two professional reasons and one deeply personal reason. Professionally, kindergarten through second-grade literacy is of great importance to me, and it's a space in which I've spent a lot of time. It's important because it sets our kids up for their future success. Also, career and technical education is significantly important to me as a workforce development leader nationally and locally. I know that 6th through 12th grade is very critical for our children to develop a sense of who they are and who they can be in the world. And finally, as the mother of a special-needs child and a child who is an immigrant and a child who comes to this space as an English-language learner, I know how critical it is that we have advocacy both for our special-needs children as well as our immigrant population. So I look forward to answering your questions this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and next, Adam.
Good evening. So my name is Adam Parrot Schiffer. I am pleased to be here and appreciate the League of Women Voters bringing us together this evening. Again, a candidate in the 10th District. And I'm here because this is really personal for me. I've spent the past 20 years as an educator improving our schools, and I am a Chicago public school parent and former principal. So when I think about this work, what I'm really hopeful for is that we can have schools that unleash the potential of each and every one of our students. You know, places where they get to experience mastery every day, where they get to tap into their creativity, where they get to explore their identities and the identities of folks from around the world, and they get to do it in joyful ways. And we need a board that's going to make that happen. We need a board that can address the academics, that can attend to the infrastructure needs that we have. And it's going to be a whole lot more transparent. And I'm sitting here for you today as somebody who isn't just talking about these things, but as somebody who has done it for the past 20 years. I'm somebody who has led a school that increased the number of students who could read and do math on grade level by over 20% in two years. I'm somebody who has expanded access to GED programming for over 225,000 students with disabilities. So when we think about the challenges we have, we need folks who are going to be ready on day one and who have done the work. And so I'm out here tonight asking for your vote, Adam Parrot Schiffer, in the 10th District.
Thank you. And lastly, Che, or do you prefer Che or Rhymefest?
Whatever you feel comfortable, Che is fine.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm proud to be here today as the community candidate of the 10th District. All of our funds were raised by the community, by the artist community. That's who I am. I was born and raised on the South Side of Chicago. I live in my great-grandmother's bungalow house in Chatham, and I am a product of Chicago Public Schools. I went to Boucher, where Michelle Obama went, and I also went to South Shore, which was my high school. But my best teachers were not inside the walls of the schools. My best teachers were Dr. Don DeWes, Dr. Tim Uwe Black, Dr. Carol Adams, people who taught me authenticity in art. And what I was able to do was get a Pritzker Axle Rod Scholarship to help young people like Anana. I have a Dartmouth Fellowship, I have a Dartmouth Fellowship, a Dartmouth Montgomery Fellowship. I have an honorary doctorate in humane letters from Chicago State University. I help children not only all over the city, but all over the country and the world. And I believe what we need on our board is diversity. We need artists on our board. We need businessmen. We need educators. But if we want a real, robust board, we will have to elect an artist. And I'm proud to be the community candidate that represents the arts in the 10th District.
Thank you, candidates. Okay, moving on to the next question. You'll have 30 seconds for this. Currently, this is in an unpaid position. How will you manage the board commitments with your existing responsibilities? And we'll start with Karen this time.
Sure. I serve as the CEO of IC Stars, which is a national workforce development organization focused on information technology, training, and development for young adults and adults between 18 and 35. I have permission from my board to actually run for this role, and I have the ability to have flexibility with respect to my schedule and to ensure that I'm able to attend not only board meetings, but committee meetings where necessary.
Great. All right, and Adam?
So, since the pandemic, I've been volunteering in my kids' schools close to a day a week. So this is just a next orderly step in committing my time to Chicago Public Schools. I have the fortune of having a job in higher education that provides a lot more flexibility in terms of my time, and I have a great support system and a partner and two young men who are willing to help around our home as well.
And Che?
Yes, I run a nonprofit called Art of Culture. We do educational programs throughout the nation and throughout the country. However, I do more administrative work with Art of Culture, so I do have the time. And I also teach young people in Chicago. I have written some very successful songs, and I am supported through the royalties that the music that we've written garnered us.
And lastly, Robert?
Yes, I'm committed to the time sacrifice. As a pastor of a church, I have a tremendous support staff that takes care of things for me as I'm able to commit myself to the time that would be needed for the school board.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to be moving on to the next question. This is 45 seconds. Let's address certain events in the news. Among other things, Mayor Johnson wants to take on a short-term, high-interest loan to cover the cost of a new contract the district is negotiating with the teacher union. CEO Martinez is not in agreement. The school board members have resigned and been replaced. What is your reaction to this controversy and actions taken to date? And for this question, we're going to start with Adam.
So, I know since the moment the news hit, I've said that a payday loan is an unwise decision and that the board members resigning is feedback, and I hope the mayor takes it to heart when the people who agree most with him on what needs to happen disagree with him about how he wants to achieve it. I think it's really important that, you know, we listen to folks and that we find ways that we can solve these great challenges ahead of us in ways that are financially responsible, because we will not do ourselves any good if we solve it for the kids in a classroom now only to bankrupt their grandchildren, who can no longer afford to live in this city. I believe that if we work together, we can find much more responsible ways to both teach, take care of our teachers, and ensure that we have high-quality academics. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, Che.
Yes, my question is, I mean, we just don't know enough about the terms of the loan. I think it would be irresponsible for candidates to make statements about a loan that they don't know what the interest rate truly is. We don't even know if all avenues were exhausted in terms of TIF funds, in terms of going to the federal government or the state government and seeing if we could shore up, you know, so we don't have to take a loan. However, not being on the board, not having access to the data, I don't think it would be fiduciarily responsible to even comment or give an opinion.
Thank you. Robert?
Yes, my response is concern, concern that we are even here in this moment. This is not something that just happened. This is something that's been ongoing for some time. And so my concern is that we need to make absolutely sure that we look at every possible avenue when we talk about helping our children and providing for our schools, that we look at every possible avenue and to make absolutely sure we do what we say we're going to do.
And Karen?
I am on record saying that it is fiscally irresponsible to take out a high-interest, short-term loan. I too have referred to it as a payday loan. There are significant consequences. Number one, it will continue to downgrade our financial rating. I recently read that the Chicago Public School system is the number-one issuer of junk bonds in the country. And so if we continue to take out debt that we have no repayment plan for, we will continue to downgrade our financial status and put ourselves at risk of financial receivership with the state. So we need to exhaust other avenues and recognize the fact that that loan would not cover all of the actual deficit that we're facing.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next question. 45 seconds. What is your position on charter schools? Do you think the number of charter schools should be expanded? Do you think there are any public school regulations that charter schools should follow? And what percentage of public money should be allocated to charter schools? We're going to start with Che.
Okay, I'm on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I believe all of our schools should be equitably funded. All of our children deserve the same opportunity at their highest potential. However, in terms of charter schools, I would not expand charter schools. I want to make sure that the standards are the same for the public schools that the taxpayers pay for. Are all of the teachers certified? Are all of the teachers being paid an equitable wage and not merit paid based on bonuses? Are the charter schools letting children who don't pass have extra opportunity to pass without farming them out to public schools if they don't make a certain grade? I want to make sure that the charter schools that we pay for through CPS have the same equity and standards as the public school, the neighborhood public schools.
Thank you. Next, Robert?
Yes, while it is a reality that we do have charter schools in CPS, I am not for the expansion of charter schools. I think it becomes important for us to understand that if we're going to have equitable economic education for all of our schools, we're going to have to make sure that the funding is there for them. You'd have to take a look at the budget and see what we have in order to determine what percentage of any money we would give to any of those charter schools.
Hey, Karen?
So, to clarify, charter schools are public schools, and charter schools receive 75% of the funding that traditional classical public schools receive. I would note that expansion is not now necessary. We have roughly 54,000 students in the Chicago Public School system who attend charter schools, and we have a variety of schools from legal to arts to leadership to STEM. And the majority of those staff members actually are unionized. There are a couple of schools that are not unionized at this point in time. And the reality is that they're actually held to quite stringent standards in terms of academics. Some perform just as well as traditional public schools, and some do not. So I actually would hold the line on expansion at this moment in time, but I think we need to stop this divisiveness between charter schools versus public schools because charter schools are public schools.
Thank you. And lastly, Adam?
I think it's a bit strange to be talking about expanding charter schools when the news of the week has been that charter schools are the only schools closing this year. And we talk about the trauma that school closings cause to our young people, their families, and their community. And I'm greatly concerned, much more right now, that we are losing school communities. And again, it's showing that there's not a same standard between our school, our publicly-funded charters, and our publicly-funded neighborhood schools, and that we have work to do there. I 100% believe we've got to be talking about equity across the board. That's why transparency matters. These things look different, and how money gets put in public versus, or neighborhood versus charter schools is different. I think we need to have conversations about what it means to have a, you know, unionized labor force in charter schools, and if that is a pathway to more equity. There's all sorts of conversations we should be having, but it's not about expansion at this time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next question. 45 seconds. What is your position on magnet selective enrollment in other Go CPS schools and programs? For this question, we'll be starting with Robert.
I think that it's a part of the culture of what we have in CPS, in education. I think that they all have their place to do the things, the out-of-the-box things, the tremendous educational things that those schools can provide. I see that there's a place for them.
And next, Karen?
Sure, I'm the product of neighborhood schools and magnet schools, and a school that is now considered selective enrollment, but was called magnet at the time. And what I recognize is that parents want a diversity of options for their children. They want schools that will meet their kids where they are. I think the issue is that neighborhood schools need to have the same access and resources and opportunities for students that magnets and selective enrollment schools do. At the end of the day, what parents want is a place that meets their children where they are and that surrounds them in love and completely prepares them for life after school. And that is what we need to make sure all of our schools are able to offer.
And Adam?
So, in Chicago, diversity is our greatest asset. It is our superpower as a city. And the fact that our schools can reflect that diversity and offer all the different options that kids might be interested in is really important. If your kid's keyed into music, if your kid's teed into math and science, the fact that we can do that for kids is amazing. I think the tension point comes when those programs happen and that there isn't an additional investment in neighborhood schools. And so, yes, we need strong magnet schools as part of our system, and they need to be complemented with delightful neighborhood schools. So when you choose one of these schools, it isn't because you're running from a neighborhood school, where my kids go, but it's because there's some particular program that you're trying to access that is interesting to you as a child.
Yeah. And Che?
Yes, I think all schools should be brought up to equity. There are parents who fought hard for their selective enrollment schools. However, no child should be discriminated against because of their zip code. In our district, I don't understand why Dixon does so well as an elementary school, but Ruggles, right down the street, struggles. We want Phillips to benefit from the same lessons as King and Dunbar. And so what I would look to do is bring all schools up to equity. So whatever a child wanted to do to fulfill their highest potential, there's a school in their neighborhood for that potential.
Thank you. Okay, for this next question, it's going to be a yes or no. And I'll tell you who we start with. Okay, are you in favor of school vouchers? And we're going to start with Karen. It's just yes or no.
It's a hard yes or no. I think... I can't say yes or no. I want parents to have opportunity for their kids.
Um, all right, try to say yes or no for these next ones, but Adam?
Whatever word is harder and stronger than no. Absolutely not.
Okay. And Che?
No.
And Robert?
No.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to this next question. 45 seconds. How long have you lived in the 10th District? What issues have you identified that are of particular importance to the 10th District? And we'll start with Adam for this question.
So I've lived in the 10th District for almost my entire adult life, going on 20 years here. And from what I know is, and the data is there to support, that some of our biggest issues are around our infrastructure and our buildings. $2 billion of delayed capital construction is owed to our schools. We have buildings that are falling apart around our children, asbestos in the tiles and lead in the pipes, and this is an environmental hazard that needs to be addressed. At the same time, we have issues around accessibility across the district, right? You go to the far southeast side there, and getting to other parts of another schools in the city is quite challenging. So we have both an access and an environmental capital challenge to address here in the 10th District.
Thank you. And Che?
Yeah, you know, I just left a voting registration drive at Argyle Gardens yesterday, and you can smell the poison that people are breathing in on the southeast side of Chicago. I grew up around there. My grandfather worked at the Steel Mill. We had no idea that we lived in a toxic donut. I would also say that there are food deserts that young people are experiencing and coming to school with hunger issues. We're experiencing, we need conflict resolution. We need nurses in school. We need wraparound services for families. So these are the things I'd like to look in the budget and see how we can support the community with our community schools.
And Robert?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes. The question is, how long have you lived in the 10th District? What issues have you identified that are of particular importance to the 10th District?
I've lived in the 10th District for 19 years, and what I've noticed in the 10th District is gross inequities at every level when it comes to education of our youth, when it comes to culturally-relevant curriculum, when it comes to facilities, when it comes to all the things that makes education, the educational environment, one that is conducive of learning and making our children good citizens.
Thank you. And Karen?
I have lived in this district for over 23 years. I've raised my family here. My children have attended school here as well. I would say that the greatest challenges that I see, just focusing particularly on education, we have two schools that are in the top 10% of all schools in the state. And then we have a number of schools that are in the bottom percentile of this state. And so what we have is vast educational inequity, and we need parity. We need to focus on early childhood literacy. We need to focus on career and technical education so that we can increase the opportunity for economic mobility and decrease the persistence of poverty from generation to generation. We have a number of issues that need to be tackled as well societally, but educationally, those are the issues.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question. 30 seconds. It's a question on equity and funding. How would you evaluate and provide for capital improvement needs across 800-plus buildings? And for this question, we will start with Che.
Yes, the first thing we need to do is make sure that all of our schools have LSCs that are up to quorum because those local school councils, principals, parents, administrators are going to identify the specific needs of that school and that building. Then we can start pairing each of those schools that are in need with strategic corporate partnerships. We could begin going to the state and saying, is this a humanitarian crisis? Listen, the EPA wants lead pipes replaced in Chicago homes in the next two years. It didn't include our public schools. We must include all of our schools for equity.
Thank you. Okay, next, Robert?
Yes, it becomes important for us, first of all, to take a look at the budget after we would have an evaluation on audit of the budget to see what it is. We know that there's a tremendous gap that needs to be looked at, but we also need to make absolutely sure that we prioritize the facilities that we're going to repair. They all need repair, but we're going to have to prioritize that and then develop partnerships with organizations, agencies, groups, companies in order to make this happen.
Thank you. Karen?
So, the CPS has a facilities plan, a master plan, that shows the quality and state and condition of all the schools throughout the district. If we were to actually fund that plan, my understanding is it would be roughly $14 billion that we'd need in order to bring all the schools up to par. We have to have a plan that... We have to have a plan that allows for rolling strategic investment within our schools. I do think this is an opportunity for TIF surplus dollars to be invested, even though some have already been allocated. There's an opportunity to redirect more for purposes of building improvements.
Thank you. Adam?
So if we're going to ever overcome this, we have to get on a, a building plan that will make sure that we actually replace and repair of all of our buildings. Uh, you know, if a building lasts about a hundred years for educational purposes, that means we need to be building about six schools a year. Um, not just repairing, building. Uh, if we think about what justice requires of us, it's that we start in the communities most impacted by school closings. And that we build true community hubs there, um, that can reinvigorate neighborhoods. I think when we prioritize, we need to be prioritizing places where harm has been done.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, forty five seconds. Given that CPS has a budget of over nine million, nine billion. What strategies would you employ to ensure fiscal responsibility while meeting the needs of over three hundred and twenty-five thousand students? Starting this question, we'll have, uh, Robert Jones.
Okay, sure. Well, first of all, it becomes important for us to understand, uh, what we are as it relates to the budget. Again, I can't say it enough, we're gonna have to have an audit to make absolutely sure that we know what it is. But then we're gonna also have to take a look at what is that misspending has been done? What is that mistakes has been made? There's been a number of times that has been made, public information where there have been mistakes made as it relates to spending expenditures. And so we're gonna make sure that we correct those things and make sure that we can manage those things properly, um, for the budget.
Thank you. Okay, Karen?
Restate the question, Ariel.
Yes. Given that CPS has a budget of over nine billion. What strategies would you employ to ensure fiscal responsibility while meeting the needs of over three hundred and twenty-five thousand students?
So first and foremost, I would call for a forensic audit to really look at the trends and spending. I would cut the fat. I believe that there can be eliminations within central office. I think we have to focus on funding the schools first and ensuring there's parity and funding with the schools first and foremost. And then we focus on redu, reduction with respect to central office. There's a whole cottage industry that sprung up around supporting LSCs just within. Uh, within the public school system. I also would focus on public-private collaborations. And ensuring that we have strategic partnerships with corporations. I think we need to have. A corporate partner at every single school to help offset some of the costs and to redirect some of the investments that we see being made within the city. Think they can be redirected into the schools. Thank you.
Okay, Adam?
I echo the desire for a forensic audit. I also think that we need to invite all Chicagoans to help share in this challenge and problem through greater transparency around budget. In ways that people can access Sort and Crunch, uh, so they can help us come to the solutions. Uh, at the end of the day, it takes about six billion dollars, uh, to provide an education for three hundred and thirty thousand kids. If you're just talking teachers, principals, aides, uh, custodians, teaching assistants, lunchroom staff, all of that. And so when we look at the other three billion, I think we need to be talking about things like zero-based budgeting. Where each year we start from scratch and say, what are the results that you're getting? And if you can't link what you're doing back to what's going on in the classroom, that relationship between teachers, students and curriculum, we gotta stop doing it. And people should be accountable for getting results with kids.
Thank you, and Che.
Yes, you know, six out of every ten of our tax dollars is paying for our schools. And we see our taxes going up and many of our neighborhood schools' health going down. What I would support is an unbiased forensic audit to see where our tax dollars are going. But number two, we have to cut waste. We bought tablets during the pandemic. We don't know where the tablets are. We bought a tracking system. We don't know how to activate it. That was millions of dollars. We have community assets, Chicago State University, the Park Districts, the museum. We should be using those to shore up, uh, shortfalls in our budget with experiential education. And then also, we are in a humanitarian crisis. The federal government, the state government constitutionally has to adequately fund our schools. And we must demand it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next question. You'll have thirty seconds for this. It's an environmental question. How would you support the advancement of lead-free water, clean air and zero waste? Starting this question, Karen?
So I would collaborate. We have so many partners on the ground within the environmental justice space. And I would collaborate with them to ensure that we are putting in all sorts of remedial measures. Uh, to make sure that our schools have healthy, clean water. We can also add in water filters, uh, with respect to fountains in the hallways. A lot of schools don't even have that system, that apparatus yet. We need to make sure that that gets installed as well. I want to make sure that we're bringing in experts who know what they're talking about and are able to advise us as we further develop.
Thank you. Adam?
So we need to pair this work with our educational mission. Um, effective schools, you know, bring this stuff together as a principal. You know, we had solar panels. We were the first schools with composting. Uh, when I was a principal, we were one of the first food sharing stations, uh, to reduce our waste. Uh, we had walk and ride to school days, right? There's ways that we build this into our culture and ethos and at the same time. Uh, you know, help our children learn these skills for the future. And part of it is we have to get out of eighteen eighty-five buildings. We need to get into buildings that have been built for the twentieth century with geothermal, and we need to do that across the city.
Thank you. Che? Oh.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so I am what, I am what they call intersectional environmentalists. I believe if you can't help people, you can't help trees. We must first begin to bring the culture of environmentalism into the lives of our students in the classroom. Learning how to eat healthy, gardening, being able to have the vocational curriculum that they need to build solar panels. And know how they work so they know the environment they're in and the community can better advocate on its own behalf. And we can fund it with our budget.
Thank you. Okay, and Robert Jones, or Robert?
Yes, uh, collaboration is gonna be the key. There are agencies, governmental agencies, there are area agencies. Uh, that would love to come in and assist us in these areas when you're talking about, uh, the lead. And all of the things that are going on in our buildings as it relates to the environment and the green technology that we need to bring, uh, into our schools. It becomes important for us to develop those partnerships and to be willing and open-minded and open to, uh, having these partnerships and collaborations happen with our schools.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next question, forty five seconds. How will you involve parents and community members in the process of approving district policies and decisions that affect their schools? Please include how you will work with local school councils in your answer. Uh, starting this question, Adam?
Yeah, so, um, I've said this many times before, that local school councils are the powerhouse of our entire system. When you look at why our schools have improved over the past, uh, decade, you know, what do people fu, fight, po, focus on? Uh, autonomy and support for principals in that partnership with parents and teachers through the local school councils. So they should be one of the structures that we are tapping into, that we are convening, that we are ensuring that policy comes from, uh, in each building. Which also means we need to have robust LSE elections. We also have a phenomenal ca, uh, Community Action Council structure where we bring together schools across this city. Uh, we need to invest in these resources. We keep making new groups. When the group's already there, there are people who are already doing this work and been doing it. We need to actually listen to them and have a board that's gonna be partners with them, um, which is something we have not had in the past.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Che?
Yes, you know, we have to invite community into the schools that the community, uh, shares. So for example, working with programs like Von Dell Singleton's Champ Mentoring, I've worked with them for years. Uh, right now, they work within the Gary Coleman Center, but they should work within more schools. Ada S. McKinley has been doing great work as parents and as an organization, bringing programs to ten public schools. We need to expand that. We need LSE training. The board needs to ensure that the same training we get, our local school councils get. And we need to change the language of our, of, of the way school boards are managed. So that parent mentorship programs can also come into the school and be active members in the health of our schools.
Thank you. Okay, Robert?
Uh, yes, it's one of the beautiful things about the whole ideal of the elected accountable, responsible school board. Is that they are, and we would be accountable to the community. It becomes important for us to make absolutely sure that we work with the systems that we have in place that we've been ignoring. Okay, we have our local school councils that are there. We have community action councils that are in the community. We have those parents of those schools being a voice that are expressing their voices but have not been heard. We wanna make absolutely sure, I wanna make absolutely sure that their voices are heard and represented, uh, on, uh, the issues that affect their children as well as affect them in the community.
Thank you, and Karen?
Sure, if I understood your question, you're asking how would we invol, have parental involvement in our decision-making? And so I think that means listening to them and hearing the concerns that they have. We can do that through engagement with the parent mentor program, which is in, I think, one in three schools within CPS. Also convening, uh, our LSCs and holding office hours. So if elected, I will actually have office hours with a current sitting elected official and be able to, uh, participate in convenings. Also, as, as Adam mentioned, leveraging the CACs, the Community Advisory Councils, I think is very important. There are a number of different avenues that we can tap into to listen to parent voice and then have it influence the decision-making. But we have to be honest and transparent with them about the challenges that we're facing and the decisions that we need to make.
Thank you. Okay, this next question is a yes or no question. Um, what we'll do it this time is just raise your hand, um, uh, for yes. Many school boards across the country are getting involved in banning of books and restricting certain subjects from being taught. For example, critical race theory. Um, are you in favor of this banning of books and restrict, restricting topics? Uh, raise your hand for yes. Okay, for the, for audience purposes, none of the candidates raised their hand, so none are in favor of this. Okay? Moving on to the next question, forty five seconds. How are you funding your campaign? Are you receiving support of money or in any kind of contributions? Such as mailers, field canvassing or, and consulting from any organizations, uh, PACs, unions or powerful wealthy individuals? How do your positions align with these funders? Uh, starting this question, Che?
Yes, so there are, we call ourselves the community candidate because our cam, our campaign is totally funded by the community. By artists, by people in the neighborhood, attorneys, plumbers, you know, the people that went to public schools. Uh, we have out-of-state billionaires. In our election, we see the same two interests, and it's not the interest of the children. We see INCS and we see the CTU. And, you know, we cannot, we shouldn't be negotiating a budget on the behalf of benefactors, but on the behalf of our children. And that's what our campaign does. Thank you.
Okay, Robert?
Uh, yes, uh, Chicago Teachers Union is, uh, one of my endorsers, as well as SEIU. Uh, as well as, uh, many individual contributors, uh, contributors, as well as, uh, churches and members, uh, of those particular congregations. And, uh, yes, as it relates to, uh, what, what my positions are as it relates to the community. Uh, are those, uh, that are in the same interest of those who support me? When we're talking about equitable, uh, and economic, uh, equity for our schools, when we're talking about sustainable community schools, when we're talking about. Uh, making sure we have restorative justice practices, when we're talking about culture, uh, and relevant curriculum. These are the interests that we have as it relates to, uh, those that are supporting us.
Thank you. Karen?
My support comes from a number of individuals as well as political action committees. I served as the leader of workforce development here in the city of Chicago for about twelve years. So I've been on a number of boards. And have relationships that are far and reaching. I have support from, uh. Sorry, I have support from Illinois Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, LIUNO, which is the laborers, as well as Local One Fifty. I am also endorsed by INCS, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. In addition, I have been the beneficiary of independent expenditures, uh, which, as people may know, you cannot coordinate with those campaigns. So there are folks that are supporting me that I've never met before and have never heard of. I will say that, uh, nationally, what has sprung up is this fight between Chicago Teachers Union, as well as those who are in favor of school choice. Uh, or who are anti the CTU, and I have the support of the folks who are against CTU.
Thank you, and lastly, Adam?
So seventy-two percent of my donors, uh, are parents and educators. Um, I do not have, uh, endorsements from the Illinois Network of Charters or the Chicago Teachers Union or elected officials. Um, I am an actual independent candidate. Um, you know, I, uh, when we raised our money, um, it is through, through folks. Um, when we got our signatures, we didn't pay for them. It was folks in the neighborhood gathering them, and we got the full thousand. So we had the early on, uh, which is not true of, of everyone up here. Um, so again, parents and teachers working hard on the street to, to make this happen. Um, and we don't have a six hundred, or you know, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar, whatever it is now, thumb on the scale that some of these special interest groups have put on it.
Okay, and a, a follow-up question, um, or actually, I'm gonna ask this next one and I'll attach it. Uh, so for thirty seconds, is there an issue we have not addressed this evening that you would like to bring up? And an audience question to incorporate in there, um. So you, we talked a lot about in, involving parents, and so what, what would you do to involve students in this, the decision-making process? So if you could fit that in that question, uh, and starting, we'll have Robert Jones.
Uh, repeat that question one more time, please.
Yeah, sorry about that. Is there an issue we have not addressed this evening that you would like to bring up and incorporate how you would involve, uh, students in the, the decision-making process?
Okay, first of all, I think that you all have covered, uh, everything quite well, and I think, uh, that's fine. Uh, but I think that as it relates to, uh, 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 other things that we should be doing as relates to that. Uh, what was that second part again? Just give me that second part again. The second part.
Uh, how you would involve students in the decis, decision-making process?
Thank you so much. It becomes important for us to involve our students at every level, okay? Uh, they have a place, they have a voice, and I would make absolutely sure that I would make sure that they would have that voice in that place.
Thank you, and Karen?
Yeah, the only thing I think we haven't talked about is mental health and wellness of our students. There's this new phenomenon of academically striving yet socially struggling students. I'm sure a lot of it has to do with the excessive screen time. Um, but a lot of it has to do with not having the wraparound support services within our schools, and I think that's important. I think it's also imperative that we lend student voice to all of our work. I think it would be, it, it would behoove us to have student positions on the LSCs. Um, actively engaged, are engaging our young people so that they are able to have their voices heard.
Thank you, um, Adam?
So I just looked at my notes. We've talked about types of schools and governance. We've talked about money. We've talked about buildings. We've talked about parent needs. Um, I'm, I think it's great that we're now actually bringing up students, um, you know, forty-five minutes in. Outside a little bit of unacademics. Um, I think it is really important that, uh, we are thinking about what is the student experience in our schools? Are they joyful places? Are they safe places? Um, I'm, I'm a bit surprised we haven't yet talked about the issues of, uh, school violence and school safety. Uh, given that we have lost young people this year. Um, and so I hope that we have time to talk further, both about students and, uh, ensuring they're safe in our buildings.
Thank you. Um, Che?
Yes, so I think everything we've talked about has been very important to, uh, the health of our schools and what it means to be a board member. But I believe your question was about how can we use more student voices, which I didn't hear any of the other candidates answer clearly. What I would do is, we need more student government, meaning, uh, students need to be learning civic engagement. I would support civic engagement curriculum. I would also, uh, support, we have honorary board members. That are high school students with a three-point-oh grade point average. We need to give them responsibilities to help us in the schools. And lastly, more school clubs so students could be interested in government and how to use their voice effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Okay, we're gonna move on to some audience questions before closing statements. Uh, so we'll do about thirty seconds for these. What measures would you support to address teacher burnout and shortages? Uh, and we'll have Karen start with.
Yes, as a former teacher, I will tell you, one of the greatest things was having the, uh, a mentor teacher and having a circle of, a community of practice. Uh, if you will, of other teachers who share the same struggles. And I think we have to make sure that we've got strong mentorship programs. We have to ensure that we are providing, not only for the mental wellness and health of our students, but also for the mental wellness and health of our teachers. That we are providing them with the opportunity to decompress, to step back from their loads. Uh, but also, most importantly, that they have an outlet for the stress that they feel and support to navigate the challenges.
Thank you, and Adam?
So the MetLife survey of teachers comes out every year, and the things that they tell us are, uh, you know, having teachers leave the profession are. Um, not feeling they have the tools to support student behavior and student culture in their classrooms. Unsupportive leaders and an overwhelming workload. Uh, and so if we're really going to address teacher burnout, we're going to have to create schools where everybody, teachers and kids, are excited to run through the doors. Um, and we're gonna need to create. And we're going to need to create schools where they have supportive leaders who are part of the team. And we're going to need to make sure that their job is focused on teaching and limit the extra stuff that does not improve instruction.
Thank you. And Che?
Yes, many of our teachers are suffering from similar trauma as the students who they are leading. We need to make sure that our teachers have the assistance they need, meaning the seekers, the substitute teachers, so that if they need to take time off, they can do that. We need to make sure that our teachers have time on task instead of dealing with behavioral issues that they can deal with the subjects they are there to teach. And the counselors and nurses are not just in our schools for our students, but also for our teachers as well.
Thank you. And Robert?
Because one of the important things about sustainable community schools models is that the wraparound services would not just provide counseling and assistance for the students, but it would provide it for the faculty and staff as well. I think that becomes important as we deal with the mental health issues that are affecting our teachers, and we want to do all that we can to make sure that they get all the help that they need at every level.
Moving on to our next audience question. How will you approach student safety without relying heavily on policing in schools? Try to keep this one under thirty seconds, and we'll start with Adam.
So student safety starts before things happen. It's having welcoming classrooms where each kid is known, feels significant, belongs, and engages in joyful practice. It's really important that we do that work to build community and then have things in place to support, you know, the retroactive things, the restorative justice practices. We need to have strong relationships with the businesses in our communities, with the neighbors across the street who help keep lookout for kids and let us know when things seem off. We need kids to be able to report when they're not feeling great. I think when we put those systems in place, we can do great things along safety.
Thank you. Next, Che?
Yes, you know, I believe we we just got rid of uniform officers in school, which is great because we can have more security guards, more people from the community inside of our schools. They become the coaches, they become the mentors. In fact, they live in the community, so many children who walk home walk home with people who are working inside of their schools. I think to make our schools safer, we must invite the community back to be a part of the schools. And the board has to not be separate from the schools.
Robert?
Yes, we've got to make absolutely sure that we use holistic restorative justice practices in our schools with our students and well as with the adults that are in those buildings as well. And we want to make sure that we are partnering with those agencies that are in the community to provide assistance and then partnering with the community. We've got to take a look at the policies that we have in this. Well, we're keeping the parents out of the schools. We got to be allowing them to come into the schools to provide some positive feedback and to the children that are there, as well as a connection with the student, with the teachers as well and staff.
Thank you. And Karen?
Hi, can someone allow my camera back in? There we go. Thank you. So to your question, I in terms of safety, I'm not in favor of police in our schools. I think we need restorative justice and restorative practices that help for solving conflicts. But we do need to have parent presence in our schools. You look at Logan Square Neighborhood Association, when they created their parent mentor program and got parents involved in the school, incidents of of negative behaviors went way down and student achievement went way up. And so we have to look at all of the different innovative tools available to us. We have all the solutions to all the problems we face. They're just not evenly spread across all of the schools. They're only available in some schools. We need to evenly distribute them everywhere.
Moving on to our next audience question. We have a few empty closed school buildings in our neighborhood. What is their understanding of why these, or what is your understanding of why these buildings are still unused? And what would candidates, or what would you envision for these buildings? Starting us off, Che? Try to keep it under thirty seconds.
Yes, so, you know, it's a lot of money to open these schools, to use these schools, but it's not impossible. My vision is that these schools become community resource centers that could be used for our seniors, that could be used for veterans. Some schools should be and can be used for housing, which we have a need for in this city. I believe that we can really bring our community up to its maximum potential by using all of our assets, which includes some of our empty buildings.
Thank you. Robert?
It is amazing to me that closed, so-called closed buildings are still fully operational as it relates to the expenditures, as relates to their utilities and usage. Those buildings could be utilized within the community to serve the community and provide themselves as a positive space and a safe place for the community, as well as for the children of their community.
Karen?
I've actually been inside some of the mothballed buildings because I was actually exploring them for use through community programs. Specifically, we were looking to create a youth hub. And some of the buildings are in very bad shape. They've been mothballed now for like eleven years, and so they're not fully operational. They're just heated enough so that the pipes won't freeze and that we don't have major disasters at them. But I do think that they can be repurposed for community hubs, for dual generation programming, or used by community-based organizations where many of them could come in and actually rent and utilize the space.
Thank you. And Adam?
I'm of the opinion that most of our buildings in CPS require care, and those that are currently not in use are in many ways beyond beyond usage. And we need to be creative about how we find them a new life, right? This is a city where we sell lots for a dollar to community organizations to build gardens, right? I think part of our challenge is we we should have learned that people from afar making decisions about these things was bad when we closed these buildings. And us choosing how to repurpose them is just as big a transgression. And it's our job to create the conditions where the community can decide what should happen with these buildings, whether it's unload them, do something new with them, or, you know, things that we might not even imagine here, because it's not on our
Okay, moving on to our last audience question of the night. Okay, we understand a lot of the corporate world love to support schools for productivity. What do your funds have to do with our children? What do funds have to do with duty and responsibility? Try to keep this one under thirty seconds. And starting, Robert Jones?
What do our funds have to do with duty and responsibility?
That's that's the question. Yes, what do funds have to do with duty and responsibility? What do your funds have to do with our children?
Okay, true, definitely. They have to do with making sure that, first of all, that our message gets out to make sure that we're able to do the things that are part of my platform. And that is to provide educational and economic equity for every school that we have in CPS and in the tenth district. But not only that, to make sure that we have sustainable community school processes going on within all of our schools, as well as holistic restorative justice practices. These are the things that are being used to make happen for my candidacy.
Thank you. Karen?
I'm assuming that as referring to campaign funds, I will say that I'm funded by more than a hundred individuals who are people who are invested in public education, someone from the Board of the Chicago Public Education Fund. Folks have funding from Tim Schwertfecker, who actually helped to fund, who was the founder of Chicago Scholars and actually creates scholarships for children to go to college. And so I'm funded by people who are, who recognize my skills and capacity and qualifications and who also care deeply about our public schools and want someone who is an independent thinker to be on the board to help lead.
Adam?
So first and foremost, I think it matters that my funds have come from independent sources. That means that when I'm sitting on the board, that I'm able to be a fair broker. I'm not in the pocket of one of these groups that are coming to the board asking for things. I think at a personal level, what it has meant to me has been, you know, I, you know, hired somebody today to support our campaign. And what I said to them is, you're being paid out of twenty-five dollars from some grandma's pocket. Somebody who, you know, took from a little bit of their tuition money and gave fifty dollars to this campaign because they believed in it. And we have to treat these dollars as sacred investments and in hope. And that as we run our campaign, you should look at how people spend their money and in what amounts. Because it should matter, because that's how they'll run as board members too, with our public dollars.
Che?
Yes, so what do the funds mean? You know, Dr. King said that a budget is a moral document. The money that we have and where we get it from speaks to our principles and our value systems. You know, it's hard for me to believe that a candidate that gets money from people they don't even know from out of the state is not compromised. Our money, this is our taxpayers' money. This is our children's future we're talking about. We see the same two big money people in every election in this country. And it's time for the community to choose what it has.
Okay, we're going to move on now. We have time for one more audience question. Okay? Okay. What budget experience do you have with either CPS or elsewhere? Keep this one under thirty seconds, and we'll start with Karen.
Sure, I managed, I took a budget from three million dollars to a hundred million dollars as CEO of the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership. Much of that money originally was federally funded, and then I was able to diversify our funds to about a fifty fifty split. I've managed over half a billion dollars in federal funds. I also raised a hundred and fifty million in corporate and philanthropic dollars and successfully had clean audits all the time. I currently manage an eleven billion dollar budget. And I'm on the board of several organizations with significant budgets as well.
Okay, Adam?
So I've managed multimillion dollar budgets as a Chicago Public School Principal, as a district administrator. I think one of the things that's really important in these situations is that we're talking about funding that is made up of state dollars, local dollars, federal dollars, philanthropy. When you're working with mixed funds, it's really important that you get it right. That's how people go to jail. And like Karen, my budgets have been spotless. My audits have been spotless in in doing this work.
Che?
Yes, I have a strategic partnership with the Golden State Warriors, where we created Golden State Entertainment, which is an entertainment company that strictly releases arts for impact in communities. And I've worked with this eleven billion dollar athletic organization to form Golden State Entertainment. I've also have a nonprofit art of culture, and we deal with a global budget. We have a school in Arusha, Tanzania, a DJ program at Dakar, Senegal. We build water pipes in Mauritania. And so I have that experience as well. And I would also, before I finish, everyone that can balance a budget doesn't mean they're not corrupt. I also adhere to good character as well.
Thank you. Robert?
Yes, as an executive director in East San Luis of a nonprofit metro east church-based citizen organization that have a million dollar budget that we managed, that as executive director of that organization that managed money from different sources, not just from the community, but also from governmental entities as well. Also, as a church leader and a community denominational leader here in Illinois, I've managed budgets with our denominational organizations in the educational realm of dealing with those issues as relates to budgets, expenditures, and balancing them as well.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, and thank you to the audience for these great questions. Due to time, we're going to move on to the closing statements. So you'll get ninety seconds, and we're going to start with Che this time.
Yes, my name is Che Ronfet Smith. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us. I am the community candidate. Our campaign is not compromised. It's funded by artists. It's funded by the community, and I believe that we need quality arts, nurses, libraries and librarians, and vocational skills in every school. I imagine a school where a student says, okay, we're going to build a stage. That's the vocation. Then they say, we're going to use the STEM students to program the engineering, the technology, the computers, for the artists to then come in and do an art program, and the community is invited. We need schools with cross curriculum, and we need artists on the board for a diverse view of how to manage our budget. Thank you.
What'd you say?
Oh, we're going, okay.
Yeah.
You've been going in the circle and you flipped it on us. So I think that it really matters that we close talking about students and what's possible for students. As a principal, I believed that if there was anything in a building a kid could do, they should do. That meant my kids helped me build our schedule. It meant they helped run parent teacher conferences. They were on my hiring committees. And we took their evaluations of teachers seriously. I think we need to do the same thing as a board. We're facing some hard challenges. We're facing budgets that will require us to be creative in ways we've never imagined before. We need folks who know the implications of each and every decision on the relationship between teachers, students, and curriculum. They need to know what will look like when folks are excited to implement it and what it's going to look like when they resist. Because that's what policy is going to require of us. We need to be that laser-like focused on kids and learning. It's also going to require people who've done the work. And I'm sitting here today as somebody who has been in our buildings, who have been working with kids for twenty years. And that somebody who's sitting on that board isn't just going to be sitting there thinking hypothetical about some kid somewhere. My children and my their friends and my neighbors are all implicated in the decisions I make. So when I make those hard decisions, you can be darn sure that I'm going home and sitting with them, just as you are, as other families, whether they work out or not, and I'll be committed to making sure that we keep getting them better and better in service of our children. Thank you. My name is Adam Parrot Schaefer for District Ten.
Thank you. Karen?
Eight years ago, I brought my daughter home from Haiti. My daughter was born without eyes, but not without a brain. And I had to fight a battle to get her the services and resources that she was entitled to in Chicago Public Schools. I wound up foregoing preschool at CPS, and she wound up entering in kindergarten. And all I could think every time I struggled with district policy and practice was if this is overwhelming for me as a former attorney, as a former teacher, what is it like for all the other parents? And so I am running to represent those families who are in search of equity, who are in search of representation, who need to have their voice heard. I come to this space with legal experience, governance experience, experience in government, experience leading a board, being on a board, and managing significant budgets, akin to the types of budgets that we are going to be managing with respect to Chicago Public Schools. I'm a parent, a CPS graduate, the mother of a CPS student, an LSC chairperson. I am in this race for all the right reasons. I have support, vast and wide support, from a number of individuals within the community and outside of it, because they recognize my background, my qualifications, and well-roundedness. I come to this race asking for your vote today. I'm Karen Norrington Reeves, running for the tenth district seat. Thank you so much. Please learn more about me at KarenForKids.com.
Thank you. And lastly, Robert?
Thank you so much for this forum, and I just want to say again, I'm Robert Jones, candidate for the tenth district. And I want to say that I have been and always will be connected with the community. I've been connected with the community at every level of my life and experience. And here's what I bring, and here's why I come, because of the voices that I have heard in the community that were not being heard. And I want to bring that voice to our elected school board with my special interests. And my special interests are economic and educational equality or equity. Not only that, but sustainable community schools. And not only that, but restorative justice practices for all of our schools. Again, Robert Jones for the tenth district, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you on today.
Thank you. All right, that about wraps it up. Thank you so much, candidates and audience, for being here tonight. Catherine, I didn't know, I don't know if you want to say anything before we end this?
Yes, I do. Let me see if I can force myself on you. Okay, very good. That was, that was wonderful. You were all fantastic, and these were great audience questions. Normally, when we have something like this, we we are in person and everyone gets to have a chat afterwards with the candidates. But in lieu of that, I'm putting in a chat, a link to all of their websites. In addition, I'm putting a link to the League of Women Voters. And also for you, we'll be putting this this video up along with some of the others that we had, and there's a link in the chat to where we are putting all of our candidate forums. And I ask you to go there and send it to your friends. I know you have a lot of neighbors who are in the district and would like to I know you have a lot of neighbors who are in the district and would like to hear a little bit more. And so once again, thank you. You've been, spent just a wonderful evening.